Time is 10:03. It is Tuesday, February 28th. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnart and the Governel Body of all other Special Assessment and Taxing Districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you kindly take role?
Supervisor Howard?
President.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Borges?
Here.
Chair Short.
I am here, and if you would all join me in a moment of reflection. Now, at this time, if you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Borges.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our world.
Mr. Lopez, do we have any introduction of new employees?
Yes, we do, Chair. We have the Director of Building Maintenance and Parks here to introduce a new employee.
Very good.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Good morning. Today's a very happy day for me. I have with me Brian Hicks. He was a 10-year employee with the county who had to go deal with some issues, and he survived those issues, so he's back.
We've all got issues. Welcome.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it, and thanks for the opportunity again to come in. And I'll give you as all I have for as long as I can. I appreciate the opportunity.
Good deal. Welcome. Thank you.
And we also have the Director of Health and Human Services to introduce a couple of new employees.
Thank you. Good morning, Renell.
Good morning, Board. I'm going to invite Dorothy Wadlow to introduce a new employee for her branch.
Good morning, Board. Dorothy Wadlow from Public Assistance Employment and Training Branch. Pull it down, huh? Thank you. I thought I'd just go with it. I do want to introduce you to Joyce Yang. She is our newest employee in our reception branch or reception group as an office assistant.
Good morning, you guys. I'm Joyce Yang. I recently moved back from Washington. I was born and raised here, actually, so I was gone for about two decades, and it's really nice to be back and just be a part of the community again.
Good deal. Welcome.
Thank you.
That is all, Mr. Lopez?
Yes, I guess that's it.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay. We don't have anything to report out of closed session. This time, the Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from the Board members to the agenda at this time. Is there any additions or corrections? Moving on, we'll receive other brief reports and announcements relative to the County of Delnart. Is there any supervisor that wishes to report up?
I'm just going to say one thing, is that we're going to kind of alter how we're doing the report outs, but I didn't want you to not have the information, so I will be posting biweekly newsletters beyond my social media. But I do want to report out one thing, is that last week I spent the majority of the week in Washington, D.C., where we collaborated. I don't know if you recall, but I was, we were one of eight counties in the nation to be selected for this Reaching Rural Initiative. And last week, we had representatives from USDA, from the BJA, from the FBI, no, I don't think they were there, but all the acronyms were there, and how we can collaborate and come up with a substance use disorder program to address some of this opioid crisis. So that is on the newsletter, but I did, I felt it was worthy for me to bring up. Our team consists of two judges, Judge McKelfish and Judge Bowers from the Uroch Tribe, our DHHS Director, Renell Brown, our Program Manager for Behavioral Health, Cheyenne Hogan, Public Defender, Ellie Hoops, and myself. And we bonded as a team, and we are going to really make a lot of things happen. Just wanted to report that out.
Very good. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Is anybody online, Kylie? No? Okay.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Nice to see everyone. Kind of a rainy day out there. The imposed state of emergency is finally ending. I'd say it's about time. Supervisor Short, Howard, Starkey, you should be embarrassed of your lack of leadership during this time. And typical of your government, governance, you attempt to hide your lack of influence in the consent agenda. In what reality do five people rarely agree on one thing, yet you all agree on between 12 and 25 things regularly without even question? That's not good leadership. Difficult circumstances require difficult conversations, and your inability to effectively guide those conversations may be your biggest failure. Of course, several consent agenda items should not be approved, but I'm here to talk about one that should have been approved long ago. Number 11, ending the local health emergency imposed by our out-of-town health officer. And typical of most of our actions, following suit with liberal policies coming down from the state Capitol. This emergency might be ending, but the programs and salaries that created during this politically imposed health concern will plague taxpayers and the community for years to come. I am here again today, taking time off work, to respectfully request this Board launch an investigation of Mr. Stutz and determine if the health officer's recommendations were successful. Were people arrested or fined, as threatened? And your own health ordinance? Right, that's the county letterhead. Read carefully. Violation of this order is a misdemeanor, punishable by fine, imprisonment, or both. Was anybody arrested? You think that's valid? Did you sweep that under the rug? Sorry, you usually don't start with number one. How come today? Let's see, Mr. Stutz, I guess during the emergency, which you guys have another one now, that's when he had the masking ordinance. We never had cases higher than when he imposed imprisonment for not wearing a mask. Was he successful? This is the Siskiyou County salary schedule for their health officer. A month.
Mr. Beaver, your time's expired.
Nineteen, between $19,400 and between, or in $24,000 a month he's making for Siskiyou County Health Officer. On top of the $13,000 he's making as a Delnart County Health Officer.
Please wrap it up. Your time's expired.
He's also receiving PPP loans in direct conflict of interest with the policy he creates. County Council can't even provide a Form 700 for him.
Brennan, your time's expired. Wrap it up, please.
Many items should not be approved.
Norma Williams, Chapter President, Delnart County Employees Association, SDIU 10 to 1. In regards to 11 and 12, yes, I'm sure county employees are glad that the local public health emergency is being lifted. There are, actually, there were three items that were approved in March and April of 2020 that impacted county employees, and the union is looking forward to addressing those further with the county administration, mainly in regards to the telecommuting policy as well as the disaster service worker policy. Those are two items that the union is definitely going to be addressing with the county in short order. I don't have anything further at this point to say. In regards to the local public health emergency itself, many of the, many of what was passed in 2020 was when Dr. Ray Walt was public health officer. Dr. Patel and then Dr. Stutz just continued to continue those resolutions, as well as anything that came down, not only from the California Department of Public Health, but also from the CDC. So it's not, nothing that we arbitrarily at public health imposed or even enacted. All I can say is that I commend the staff of public health, I am one of them, but I do commend the staff, our nursing staff, our reception staff, many who did contact tracing and case investigation, who worked in the Department of Health and Social Services. So I do commend their, their, their work and everything that they did to keep this community safe. We lost, we did lose people, maybe not in the huge numbers in other areas, particularly down south, but quite frankly, during that horrible summer, what I call the Delta Summer of 2021, we lost 40 people in this community, just in that summer alone. And quite frankly, I think we probably would have lost more if some of the actual, actual things that we were supposed to do to keep people safe in this community weren't enacted. So I think we did our job, we did what we were supposed to do, we owned up to our mission statement as county employees and as public health staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the consent agenda?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we could pull two and seven and 12.
Two, seven, and 12. Mr. Beaver, you've always, you've already had your opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda. That's what's open at this time.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like you to empower yourself and pull one and number 12 for further discussion, please.
Supervisor?
Okay, at this time, I'll close. Public comment? Do we have a motion? A motion at this time would be appropriate.
I will make a motion to approve one, three through six, and eight through 11. All that but what Supervisor Wilson pulled.
I will second that.
There you go. We got a motion and a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes, and we will now take up item number two. Supervisor Wilson, if you would?
Yes, is, is the DA online? Okay. The reason why I pulled this is, is a lot of this stuff gets pushed on consent agenda, but we don't get an opportunity to really highlight some of the things that are a benefit to our community and are ongoing, and let the public know just exactly what these things mean for us. And victim witness is, is an important program and project within the District Attorney's Office. It provides funds through this grant that allow them to provide sometimes funds and services to victims and witnesses of crime, to assure that they have the support that they need around them while they go through the process at the District Attorney's Office. And this includes things like notification if there's going to be a release of a in custody from jail, so that they have advance notice, so that they can be aware. It sometimes includes transportation up to our area and housing while they're giving testimony and being present. It provides them protection sometimes, if necessary and needed, for under witness protection and other things. So it is a very important program, but it doesn't get highlighted unless we actually say it can pass on a consent agenda without anybody's knowledge or noticing it, and it's one of the things that we do get as a benefit to our county, and that's just, I wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
And move to approve item two.
And I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Howard and a second by Supervisor Starkey. Is there any public comment on item number two?
Sam Stray, Crescent City.
Good morning.
It's, it's not often that we get an opportunity to understand and have some sort of a concept of what items on the consent agenda are, and very often, when the public is greeted with a long list of consent agenda items, there is somewhat of a mystery as to what the Board is actually approving, and so it is a welcoming sign in the fact that the Board has trusted us with the knowledge that is inside some of these issues that occur on the consent agenda on a regular basis, and it would be nice if more of this kind of activity would occur so that the public would actually understand what it is the Board, what the Board is attempting to do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on item number two? Kylie, if you would pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item number seven.
And, and again, this is, this is, again, I'm doing the same thing, because this is a very critical program in Delnart County that shouldn't get passed on consent without giving the department head, hopefully, an opportunity to tell the community about the service that's being provided, and the good it does, because in the board letter, it just says 900 families. But what WIC does and what it gives into our community to provide families with some of the necessary needs should be highlighted. So Renell, would you like to say something, please?
Good morning, Renee.
Caught you off guard, sorry.
Hi, Renell Brown, Director of Department of Health and Human Services. So I'm also going to invite our interim Assistant Director, Jake Campbell, to come up, because he is actually our WIC program director, so he's going to have all the details for you, but our numbers have increased, and that's actually a good thing, because that means we're serving more individuals in our community, and the additional funding that this amendment is for is really to provide more services to more families. So do you want to elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Surprise.
No, it's all right. This amendment specifically is to address the breastfeeding peer counseling program. It's a program we were just awarded from State WIC. Specifically, it is to promote breastfeeding within our community, within WIC participants, and so it provides additional funding focusing on that. As we saw last year with the formula shortages and recalls, there are risks to formula feeding, and any kind of breastfeeding promotion is what is best for children at this time, specifically if formula companies are not willing to take the necessary precautions to produce a safe product. So this is really just supporting folks who want to promote breastfeeding and choose to breastfeed.
Very good. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on item number seven on the consent?
Much appreciated, Chairman. Thank you. I'm not sure if questions are allowed at this point, but I do see that this is an amendment for $387,000 for totaling 2.2 million, and I was just wondering how many participants were being served.
The Board report says 900.
900 families, okay. Thank you. That's $6,000 a day, and being that this contract goes through 2025, and it's only four months old, how many more amendments are we likely to see?
Is there any other public comment for item number seven? Okay.
I'll move to approve seven.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Supervisor Wilson, item number 12.
Again, we're seeing the end of, of the COVID emergency, and, and it's been now almost three years, and we have unfortunately seen a huge amount of information that's frightening about the process, about what was done, and about the impacts that the vaccine is having on a, on a huge number of, of individuals, and we're still finding constant information coming out. I hope it, it's, it's a cautionary tale for, for government that we do not act out of fear, that we do not act in haste, and we do never force on our people something that is without safety protocols and concerns. What we have done to our citizens of this country, unfortunately, is going to have an impact that's going to last for generations. The number of individuals that we may lose because of our actions and the things that we forced on our staff and employees and others should never be done again. As a supervisor, my job is to sit here and to assess the information and to give it and provide it, but the regress of taking away your freedoms, your liberties, and your rights should never be done for any justification, for any reason. What we did here, unfortunately, is going to be a shame, I think, on, as we find the aftermath of what we've done to our citizenry. We should provide you with the information, provide you with the opportunity, but nothing ever should be forced upon you. I am glad to see this resolution pass and hope to God we never have to instill something so similar and abusive to our public. so similar and abusive to our public. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Is there any public comment on item number 12?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Wilson, thank you for your words there. And there does need to be some healing, some self reflecting and self evaluating. Why are these on the consent agenda? Why, I've been here, not because I want them, but I've been asking to get COVID as an agenda item. But now it's just on the consent and no discussion. No one says, well, we could have done this better, or this might not have been right. Our test scores are pretty bad. The opportunities for our kids are almost nonexistent. Good thing we do have some good people in the community that are very caring. That's why we're all here, make a better community, right? Let's move forward, but let's establish some accountability, right? Why, why did we have this health ordinance that was unconstitutional? It's been deemed unconstitutional. And why was there no accountability? Why did we allow it to happen? Empower yourselves, right? You guys have influence. Use it. You don't have to just take the state and federal money. You know, you guys are in a tough position, right? You can get it from both angles, and you can't comply with everything. Thank you for ending the emergency. I, I hope we, in the future, we can stop using crisis and emergency to justify everything. You know, South Beach resilience, I mean, it's just ongoing. We need to lead by example. Living a life full of emergencies and disasters is not healthy. Take accountability, please. Fire Dr. Steps.
Is there any other comment on item number 12? Motion at this time would be appropriate?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 12.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our 1025 timed item. This is the regular public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any general public comments? Good morning. Might want to pull that down a little bit for you. There you go.
I'm short. Good morning. My name's Linda Thompson, and I live on South Bank Road. And we have a problem that you're all aware of. 20 years ago, when we built our home, there were no vacation rentals. We were neighbors. It was a neighborhood. We knew each other, we looked out for each other. And slowly, we are inundated with vacation rentals. We have two, one on each side of us, one that accommodates six people. So there are six people that are on our private river bar. The other place, other side, there's one opening up that had, that accommodates 10. That's 16 strangers in our backyard. There's no regulation, no code, and there needs to be. How many of you live next door to a vacation rental that have trespassers, litterers, speeders? We don't know who these people are. And we really would like you guys to back us up. There's got to be some solution. I mean, we're, we live there, we're taxpayers. We pay property taxes to the middle of the river. And we should have some rights as such. So, you know, anything you guys can do would really be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Vince Thomasic. I live on South Bank Road as well. There are no rules, no regulations in this county for vacation rentals, short term rentals. Not one. If you want to get a short term rental, there are people in there that just talked Linda. People built a brand new home next to them, went to the assessor's office to pay their fees, bam, 10 people allowed. You don't know if they have proper sewage, you don't know if they have proper water, you don't know if they have proper parking. You know nothing about that because you have no regulations. I don't know where the hell you guys have been, but this is 21st century. City of Crescent City has rules and regulations for vacation rentals. There's nothing in the unincorporated areas. Mr. Howard, you're our representative. We haven't heard anything from you because it's very easy for you to say, I recuse myself because I have vacation rentals. And I understand that, but still you can have comment and you can add in and talk to the fellow supervisors. Something's got to be done. You say there's no problem, I say you're wrong. The whole unincorporated area is under attack by vacation rentals. You had a good speech, Mr. Wilson, about letting people know in this county about the COVID and all this. Well, we're recipients, we pay taxes just as well, and our rights are being violated. I'm sorry, sir, but that is the truth. A commercial hotel definition is a business hotel operating as a commercial activity which provides lodging to guests that is not used or is not intended to be used as a primary residence. That's what's happening. We are zoned residential agricultural. You're putting a commercial enterprise right next to us. Nobody's telling us. Nobody said to the Thompsons, hey, you're going to have 16 people next to you now. Come this summer, it's going to be a real, real treat. That's all I got to say. But something has to be done. You've got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, close the public comment period at this.
Sorry. Good morning again. If I could just tie on the previous gentleman's statement, the previous chairman said that there was an ad hoc committee established for vacation rentals and long term rentals. Was that true or? No. So no, it'd be maybe that might be a good committee. Or, you know, there are some concerns there. So people have to come for months on end to get an answer, and it'd just be good to have some feedback. Tell a little story because I don't know really where to go or what to complain about. But recently watched my eight-year-old son playing basketball for the rec. I was glad to see the rec had a season again. I personally know the value the rec department instilled in me, and, you know, I'm grateful for John Sutton and the great program he ran. You know, and it really epitomized what community health is all about, right? Getting people engaged, brotherhood and common interests, activities, exercise. But what frustrated me when I was watching the game is there were no rules, right? Eight years old, and I understand we want him to have fun, but, you know, a kid get the ball, he'd run three quarters of the court, and everybody'd follow him. He'd shoot, and hopefully he'd make it, get rewarded. He was positively reinforced for not playing by the rules. And it seems like that's just what we condone now and we tolerate. So I'm going to say it again, accountability. You know, do we, do we protect American freedoms? Are we financially responsible? Are we spending within our means? Do we take accountability for our actions? Take accountability for our words and for the approved policy? What is the church, what does your church do for homelessness? If it's such a priority for you to deal with it, and, I mean, I, I mean, the county spent, what, seven, eight million dollars for these homeless pods? The city, and it has, what, 30, 40 people? City, same amount of money. They're going to build an apartment complex and house up to 300. Is this your plan, a strategic plan? What's your church do? Before you start spending everyone else's money, be accountable for your own. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity. Sorry, I'm a little slow to stand up these days. I, I just want to stand and speak on behalf of vacation rentals. And, you know, Vince, they, if they built a brand new house, then it was inspected. It was per code. It has a good septic system, a good water system. It's, it is, it's, it really is. And, you know, as far as hotels, I think our county council has a brief stating that these are not hotels, that these are homes that have been utilized on a short-term basis. And I think that's an important distinction to make. And Linda, I, I am aware of situations, and I hope that your neighbors will be good and respectful neighbors and do their best to keep things under control. We are a neighborhood, and we, we own a house there right next to Vince. And we are a neighborhood. I, I don't want to out Vince, but I'm going to. He is my friend. And Vince went down and built a, a bench on the, beside the river where there used to be one. He built one for me. We share a mailbox standard, and the mailbox standard rotted out. And Vince, I was getting ready to go over there and fix it. Vince called me up and says, I already got it taken care of. He fixed our mailbox. This last week, we had terrible storm. And just out of the blue, I got a call from Vince, and he said, hey, I just want you to know there are trees around you that fell, but your house is fine, everything looks okay, just wanted to save you a trip out. Vince is my neighbor, and I'd do anything for him that I can. It is, we are a neighborhood, and vacation rentals are a part of that neighborhood. We just need to be a good, respectable functioning part of that neighborhood. And I want to be a part of that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment period at this time and move on to our 1030 timed item, approved grant applications received under the Delmar County Community Nonprofit Pilot Grant Program as recommended by the Board of Supervisors' Grants Technical Advisory Committee. Do we have any reporting? Thank you, Randy.
Absolutely happy to give you guys a brief report for this item, although it was a recommendation from the Grants Technical Advisory Committee. So if the board would refer, I defer to you, isn't happy to do that. So as we've reported through the technical advisory committee process, I think in periodic check-ins with the board, including the adoption of the 2223 county budget, this item has actually been kind of on the burner for a little while. It has to do with federal aid originally that was received under the American Rescue Plan Act, having to do with COVID and local organizations that were adversely affected by some of the things that we've been, have been brought up this morning. Businesses were closed, community facilities were unable to be used. I mean, all the negative things that had to do with the public health pandemic response had, had an effect. And so through the American Rescue Plan Act, there was an acknowledgement of the impacts specifically on nonprofit organizations. And so the board heard that. Through the adoption of the budget process, a pilot program was approved by the board that had taken into consideration what the county could do with some of these funds to assist some of the impacted local Delmar County-based nonprofit organizations. And so again, with the approval of the 2223 budget, approximate $200,000 exactly was approved by the board, and the direction to staff was to put together a program to get this money out to the, to the community. And so we did that. We put together a pilot program. I don't think the county's ever done this before. I don't think the county's ever been in the position to do this before because of the funding that was received through the American Rescue Plan Act. But what we did was develop some criteria that we felt would reflect what the board, how they would kind of view the hierarchy of need, specifically rooted on the idea that these were local Delmar County-based nonprofit organizations. I'm going to emphasize that a couple times. After the budget was approved, the program was, was implemented. A call for projects was put out. Applications were received after the budget was approved in October through the end of December. So that was the grant application period. During that timeframe, we received 17 total applications, totaling more than what the board had budgeted. And so then it was a matter of doing a screening of the applications to do a determination and a recommendation to the technical advisory committee as to which projects would even be eligible to begin with, and then to provide some sort of order to, the order in which they were received, kind of a first come, first served sort of basis. And again, this was a pilot program, never having done this before. We were kind of, you know, putting what, you know, we felt out to the public that we, you know, hoped would best meet the need of the public through these nonprofits. And I feel pretty good about it. I think through the course of implementing the project, we've learned a number of things. We've been collecting data through the process. I've invited, is all of, all of the folks that we've recommended to receive grants here today, and hopefully you'll get a little feedback, I can kind of hear from them on how the process went. My sense is I think it was, you know, fairly seamless, but what we can hear from the public. And again, this being a pilot program, if, if the board decides to do this again in the future, should funds become available, hopefully we can incorporate some of those things that we've learned through this process. But to summarize, the 17 applications were able to be reduced to 12 ultimately. The number that was requested by the 12 was slightly above the budgeted amount. And so one of the decisions that was made by the technical advisory committee was to reduce the number of some of the applications kind of on an equitable basis for the folks that had requested the maximum amount. So we did that. That is reflected in your board report. The table represents the recommendation from the technical advisory committee that actually fits within the budgeted amount approved by the board. And you can see there's a pretty good cross-section of nonprofit organizations that have been recommended for funding. I'm available for any questions. Hopefully, everything was clear. And again, I did let the public and the applicants know that the board will be taking this up today, so hopefully we can hear from some of them.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I, I have comments, and I'm thrilled to see this come to fruition. It's, it's something that we pushed for early on when we knew it was an, something that we could allocate out. I was part of the technical advisory committee for when this came before us, and some of the people applying for the grants came forward as well. And we are appreciative that you were willing to reduce your amount slightly so that we could stay within budget. That was very important to Supervisor Borges and I, that we stayed within the budget that we allocated. It's easy sometimes to say, it's only $2,000 more, let's go for it. But we really want this to be a successful program. And my only hope is that throughout the course of this next year, when you use this money and you spend it on valuable things for our community, I, I would like to just get some feedback from you on how that was able, how you were able to do these things for our community and how it was a benefit for our community. So I am hoping to hear back from, from some of you. I don't know if there's a, a process in which they report back, but if there is not, I really would love you to pick up the phone and call us and let us know how it worked out.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey.
I can speak to that just very briefly. So the grant agreements which are before the board today do stipulate that there'd be a report provided within, I think, a year of the closeout of the project. So again, this being a pilot program, the idea is we're going to be collecting that information, returning it to you as the board to kind of see again how these funds were used to benefit local services.
Very good. Thank you, Randy. Supervisor Borges, you got it? No? Okay, does anybody wish to hear from any of the grantees? Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Straight?
I'm a little curious, um, the county's spending, uh, county money. They're applying for grants to assist nonprofits in the county and, uh, seems like a fairly substantial amount. I'm wondering where the concern is for all of the people that had private businesses in Delnort County that, uh, don't seem to be getting the same kind of, uh, attention that, uh, nonprofits who do not pay taxes to the community. What's with all of that? It's, uh, somewhat of a concern for me when I wander around the community and see all the closed-up businesses from the activities that this county applied to private businesses during the course of the pandemic. And, uh, yet, uh, nonprofits seem to, uh, be the ones that are benefiting for the most part from the county's activities, at least, uh, in appearance of this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? So I'll go ahead and close public comment. Randy, could you, um, possibly speak to that using county funds for support?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. I appreciate it. So, um, through the pandemic, there was different waves of, uh, federal, state money that would, that would come down to, you know, all different sectors of, of industry and the economy. Um, the, the decision of the board was specifically to tie this to nonprofits because nonprofits were one of the areas that, that were actually, uh, least benefited by the federal largess. I guess for lack of a better word, uh, there was quite a, quite a bit of money coming down to, uh, private industry through, uh, different appropriations. This, but it was a decision of the board to support those services in the community that otherwise wouldn't have benefited from, for any of that, uh, support.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Send that motion.
We've got a, a motion and a second to approve this grant application. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our ten forty timed item. Receive a presentation from the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority regarding the upcoming eighteen thirty-six runway rehabilitation project. And discuss and direct staff regarding the five percent local match contribution funding for this project as requested by Ryan.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Ryan Cooley, Airport Director. First time meeting a lot of you, a couple of you, you already know. Thank you on behalf of the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority for, for allowing us to come and speak to you today. I'd like to take a quick moment to actually, uh, bring to the attention of the Board of Supervisors and the community, a little bit of insight into rural community airports. I've spent the bulk of my working career in, uh, the rural airport environment. And it's very important to stress that rural communities, um, more often than not, there's a lot of community members who don't realize that their small rural airport, uh, is actually an asset and a benefit to their community. They might not even know that they have service there. And not only is the service commercial aviation, which is important, we're lucky to have commercial aviation, uh, but emergency medevac services as well, hundreds to thousands of flights every year, uh, taking the most critical patients out of our small rural communities to receive life-saving medical, uh, care, uh, as well as, uh, shipments, packages, mail, coming in and out through UPS and FedEx. Uh, so really, in reality, for our rural communities, the airport in a rural area is our gateway to everywhere else. Um, and so with that, I'll lead into my brief presentation to you. Delnort County Regional Airport at Jack McNamara Field is our community airport. Uh, our regional airport is twenty miles south of the California Oregon border, for those who might not know, uh, located approximately three miles northwest of the town of Crescent City, covering almost five hundred and forty-four acres on Point St. George, which is south of Talua Dune State Park, east of the Pacific Ocean and west of Highway one oh one. Um, I'm very fortunate to have such a beautiful, uh, office view at my, at the airport. The airport is administered by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority through a master lease agreement with the Delnort County, through a joint powers authority consisting of the County of Delnort, the City of Crescent City, Elk Valley Rancheria, the Talua Dany Nation, Curry County, and the City of Brookings. Contour Airlines is our commercial airline. Uh, commercial airline service is critical to our region for tourism and business. Contour provides daily round-trip service to Oakland and Contour Airlines operates thirty-seat ERJ regional jets. So important to the community to know that we don't operate the turboprops that kinda make your head buzz. We've got jet service and that's fantastic. Twenty twenty-two regional reservation data shows that, uh, seven hundred and two reservations came out of Curry County, nine hundred and thirty-three reservations for the year came out of Delnort County for a total of one thousand six hundred and thirty-five reservations. So as you can see, we've got a great spread between Northern California and Southern Oregon utilizing our community airport. Employments starting in twenty nineteen, uh, nine thousand eighty-four with a roughly seventy percent employment rate. Twenty twenty, impact of COVID dropped way down to thirty-seven point six. Slowly building back up in twenty twenty-one, near seven thousand. And twenty twenty-two employment still climbing to seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five. So the economy's recovering, tourism's recovering, people are traveling again. Calor Lifelight is our emergency medevac service out of our airport. They're based locally and they provide Delnort County Regional Airport, uh, the emergency medevac services that we so desperately need in our rural areas. They transport an estimated one thousand patients per year from our airport. Approximately fifty percent are Delnort County residents, thirty-five percent come from Curry County, and fifteen percent, this was shocking, are travelers and tourists from other areas. Communities depend on Calor Lifelight for time-sensitive medical emergencies due to their remote locations. Uh, many Curry County patients are ground transported to our airport and then flown to higher level care due to weather and other restrictions at their airport that they utilize out of, uh, Brookings and Gold Beach. Calor Lifelight operates twin-engine pressurized all-weather Beechcraft aircraft. And each Calor aircraft is potentially a portable ICU, um, which is very, very important for those needing the medical service. Um, I have provided with you in the, uh, presentation packet as well as, as an attachment in general, a ca, a letter from Calor Lifelight supporting our runway one eight three six rehabilitation project. Growth, uh, so according to the U.S. Census Bureau, our region has been experiencing regional populational growth and the airport continues to be responsive to the increase of growth by expanding our capacity and maintaining facilities with multiple projects, which include the recent construction of our beautiful terminal that we have out there at the airport, planned runway and taxiway pavement rehabilitation projects, and further airport infrastructure improvements. Most critical to our operation is our runway infrastructure. We've got two runways, runway one eight three six and runway one two three zero, and our two taxiway systems that guide aircraft to those runways. Uh, the most recent pavement maintenance and management plan that we have indicates that the pavement for runway one eight three six is between fair and poor with large alligator cracking throughout. Um, and rehabilitation of this pavement is critical to ensuring safe operation of all the aircraft at the airport, not just GA traffic, commercial traffic, uh, medevacs. Everything is critical out there. Uh, pavement rehabilitation is critical to ensuring a safe operable surface to our aircraft to utilize. Left untouched, the aging air, uh, the aging pavement will fail, causing further cracks, foreign object debris, and further damage and deterioration. Runway one eight three six is the runway that is undergoing rehabilitation starting summer of next year. Considering the necessary rehabilitation of this runway, the runway improvement project was listed on our airport's capital improvement plan, currently in the design phase with construction next summer. Along with the runway pavement project, uh, the rehabilitation project, uh, we will be upgrading the lighting system to medium-intensity runway lights that are LED, improving visibility, energy efficiency, and reducing maintenance costs, reducing the amount of time that employees have to spend out there, uh, replacing lighting fixtures, the bulbs themselves. Um, overall massive improvement to the infrastructure out there. There will be minimal impact, uh, economic displacement because of the primary runway being kept in service during the rehabilitation of this project. Aircraft will continue to operate and the airport will continue to remain open and the public will still be able to travel. The cost estimate used in our airport capital improvement program, uh, is over eight million dollars, of which ninety-five percent will be paid for using FAA Airport Improvement Program grant monies. The FAA can approve, um, on a case-by-case basis, a fifteen percent increase. And as I've seen so far with our grants in the past, uh, there has been an increase in cost with procurement of aircraft rescue and firefighting gear, uh, and equipment. Um, our local match for the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority is four hundred thousand, based off that eight million dollars. And with the anticipated fifteen percent increase in, in labor and materials, we're looking at close to nine point two million or four hundred and sixty thousand for our match. So we are asking for an equal contribution from all JPA members of seventy-seven thousand dollars to assist with this rehabilitation project. And as a wise airport director here once said, "We are all in this together as a community, a community comprised of cities, counties, states, and sovereign nations. And when communities build airports, airports build communities." And Jack McNamara Field is our community airport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Patty, for being here. Do you have any questions or comments for, for Ryan from the board?
So I have a question, mainly about the airport, I guess. I have a problem, not a problem, more of a question. Why is it, maybe this may not be the place, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Why, um, if I type in, I'm in Medford Airport and I wanna fly to anywhere in the U.S., they'll give me a list of, you know, you're gonna fly here, three layovers, five layovers, whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
But if I type in Crescent City to just simply, you know, Vegas, no flights. There's never any flights available. Why is that?
So that's because Contour Airlines out of Oakland does not have an interline agreement with any of the airlines that operate out of that airport. So because they only fly to Oakland and their interline partner, American Airlines, doesn't fly out of there, there are no other destinations for the reservation systems to show you where you can go beyond that. That's why everybody who flies out of Crescent City has to make separate reservations from Crescent City to Oakland and then Oakland to wherever else you may be traveling to. If, for example, American Airlines flew out of Oakland to Las Vegas, um, you would then see that option of Crescent City to Las Vegas with a connection on American, uh, lifted as a potential contour flight or the flight out of here would be lifted as an American Airlines flight continuing through to Las Vegas with your connection. But that's why.
Is there no way to correct that? Because I would assume that would increase the usage of the airport, I mean, dramatically.
Uh, I wouldn't use the term correct. A contour could potentially reach out to other airlines and, and secure interline agreements with them. That being said, it's a lengthy process, it's a costly process, and it involves contract, contracts and agreements. And unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to speak to why they have or have not done that with other airlines out of, other, out of airports that they serve. Yeah. But that, that's why.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for, for Cooley?
It's a needed process, I can tell you. Uh, you know, it's, it's desperately needed. To, and to that end, you know, I can only say, uh, not only is this, you know, necessary for maintaining our safety, um, because that, that, that hub is, is, as, as we've seen in the past, Delnort County can easily become isolated and, and airport becomes the one means that we can get emergency services in and out. And to that end, uh, I'd also like to see in the future, you know, some, some addressing to the Gaskin and Klamath airports because they have in the past served, especially, uh, when fires are raging. Uh, they have served as the base camps for, for fire suppression and, uh, utilization. And so they, they are necessary and needed so that we can get to those things, especially in Klamath because it, it has in the past been isolated numerous times. Uh, and helicopter was the only way that we could get people in and out that needed to be removed. So, um, I'd like to see attention because I know, having visited, uh, those are, those two are in need of, of some TLC.
Yes, they are. And to, to kind of piggyback on that a little bit more, um, in terms of the, like, the, the pavement infrastructure out at the airport, it is a vital piece of economic development as well as infra, infrastructure, uh, improvements out at the airport.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, we're gonna entertain some public comment on this item right now. If there is any public comment on this item?
I used to fly regularly out of Crescent City and I haven't done so for ten years, primarily due to the fact that the, uh, current provider, Contour, Contour Air is the problem and will continue to be the problem because the ability for them to grow in any substantial fashion is almost non-existent. They'll probably peak out at around ten thousand employments per year. And, uh, that's primarily due to where they fly and the fact that flying into Oakland, uh, presents, uh, a considerable amount of difficulty that, uh, other airports, uh, do not, in fact, create. And, uh, until that portion of the problem is corrected, uh, the airport will be hamstrung in terms of its ability to actually grow. The other problem that the airport should consider is the fact that the, uh, length of the primary airstrip is, is less, or is, I think it's approximately five thousand feet long and it lacks the ability to land a fully passengered, uh, regional or, or a small jet, forty-four passenger jet. And that is a huge problem for this. And so I would think that the board would be more inclined to consider lengthening the airstrip before they worried about, uh, patching the current airstrip. And, uh, then you would open up your ability to fly people to far greater places than simply Oakland.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you, Ryan. Go ahead. I don't see any other public comment, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, I'd like to take, take a moment to speak to that. Um, first, regarding the destination of Oakland, um, uh, the public was surveyed at the, the last time, uh, that issue was addressed regarding destination and the public had, had the majority voted for Oakland. So that's why, uh, Contour had continued to choose Oakland. They would potentially prefer Sacramento because they do have interline agreement with American out of Sacramento, but the public, uh, spoke and Oakland was, was chosen. Um, and to speak on the runway length, um, the runway length, especially when you're using FAA money to pay for these projects, FAA looks at what type of aircraft primarily uses that runway and the length necessary for that aircraft to operate. And technically, um, they actually believe that we should have a, a runway that's not as wide, um, than the hundred and fifty feet, going to all the way down to potentially seventy-five feet wide. Um, and anything beyond the five thousand feet that's already there, uh, we would need to cover one hundred percent, uh, in order to pay for because we, we don't technically qualify for needing that long of a runway for the thirty-seat, uh, ERJ that we serve primarily out of here. So that's the reason why we can't just go and ask the FAA to assist to pay for a longer runway. Wish we could, but.
Ryan, what would happen if, uh, if we didn't do this project? I mean, it, it, to me, it looks like Route sixty-six when you, when you.
So if we didn't do this project, um, and we just left it going as is, potentially maybe doing some crack sealing on our own through the roads department and whatnot, uh, it would continue to deteriorate and then annually the FAA comes down and does a certification inspection, uh, to allow us to continue receiving commercial airline service. And if they were to ever come down and deem that the runway is in too rough a shape, they could shut that runway down for, um, commercial air service, which potentially then impacts our contour's ability to come in here specifically if we do have crosswinds or inclement weather conditions that require them to land at a different, uh, direction than one two three zero, uh, they would be forced to turn around and go back to Oakland, thus severely, uh, reducing the amount of flights that we receive. And one two three zero is deteriorating at the same rate, if, uh, if not a little bit faster than one eight three six because it's the primary runway, um, then that would deteriorate as well and then we would have no runways. So that's, that's what would happen.
Does your commercial air service include our air ambulance service?
No, commercial air service is only, uh, the, the commercial air service, Contour, yeah.
I didn't know if that was categorized the same, the same, so thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Howard, you had something?
Yes, um, just a couple of things. We do have a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, which is a joint powers authority with the various members, as you've, um, elaborated on. But the county still owns this property.
Correct.
You just manage it as the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. So it is still the county's responsibility, no matter what contributions come in to this pool to help leverage whatever dollars are necessary to, to make our five percent contribution. I think it would behoove this board, as we do own it, um, to think a little bit more proactively in this case, in case, um, the funds from the other joint powers authority members do not come through. There's a situation here with potential cost overruns for a total project cost of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. There is the potential, if we don't come up with that amount of money, if that is the max estimate, um, to lose this project in the contribution from the FAA. I would, uh, ask our board to. I would ask our board to consider being proactive in this case if Ryan and his team are unsuccessful with the other members of the Joint Powers Authority in trying to come up with contributions to whatever the county commits to. And I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but I do think we need to consider it. As you've stated, this is an asset. It does provide an incredible amount of economic revenue generated in this community to all our businesses. I just want us to be prepared for potentially some of our other partners, whether it's Elk Valley Rancheria, that has been very generous in the past with this Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and other members like Curry County and the City of Brookings, that we be prepared, just in case the inadmissible does happen.
Board, I'd like you to also consider ongoing contribution for other projects that we have coming up, such as the 1230 and the Taxway A and B as well in the next few years.
The ongoing contribution, I guess we'll probably hear about it at a future meeting. I think that would probably be appropriate. So we've heard public comment on this item and discussion from the board. I think it's probably appropriate at this time for a motion, if anybody seems so inclined.
Do we need to make a motion if we're just directing staff regarding the 5% local match?
It doesn't technically have to be a formal motion, but it is agendized to take action, so it doesn't hurt.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we direct staff regarding the 5% local match contribution, funding for this project as requested by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority Director, with the caveat that we are open to increasing that should the partners not contribute their $77,000.
We have a motion?
I'd second that.
And we have a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Borges? Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to our general government items, we're on item 16. Approve and adopt a resolution for an exception to the 180-day wait period for hiring retired annuitants per Government Code Section 7522.56 of the Public Employees Retirement Law as requested by the Director of Child Support Services and recommended by the County Administrative Officer and the Human Resources Risk Manager.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Signal public comment? We have a closed public comment. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Item 17 is approve and adopt an ordinance establishing regulations for smoke-free multi-unit housing as requested by County Council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by, we'll just call it Supervisor Starkey. And we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Signal public comment? We'll close public comment. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to budget transfers, we have two. Approve and adopt a budget transfer 02-10 in the amount of $16,100 within the payroll and retirement line items of the SNAP Ed budget unit for staff reimbursement as requested by the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. And item 19 is approve and adopt budget transfer 02-12 for fiscal year 2022-23 from the Health Insurance Professional Services ASO Premium Line to the Administration, Interfund Administration Line in the amount of $25,000 as requested by the County Administrative Officer.
So moved.
We have a motion. And a second. Do we have any public comment on these budget transfers? Signal public comment. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Our legislative and budget issues. Item number 20 is approve and authorize the chair to sign a comment and letter on the 90-day finding on a petition to list Oregon coast and Southern Oregon and Northern California coastal Chinook salmon as threatened or endangered under the Endangered Species Act as requested by the Board of Supervisors. This is the item that we discussed at our last meeting, and the letter...
I'll move to approve, and I appreciate how quickly you were able to turn that around.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this letter?
Thank you. And if you could just maybe help me understand the process a little better, since you did vote on it at the last meeting, why is it back on this one? But you still approved the...
Now we've got to see it.
You approved writing it, and we wanted to see it back here. So this is just finishing up that.
And what are the implications if it is placed on the endangered species list? And what would happen if the county decided not to comply?
Oh, boy. Yeah, those are big questions.
Primarily enforcement is done by Fish and Wildlife, which we don't have direct action with.
So do we, we had a motion and a second. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing no further comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you for Mr. Hooper to take the lead on this and Mr. Koopman for bringing this to our attention in short order, so we, as a county, could react to something that could potentially really destroy part of our economy, which helps not only support our tourism industry, but also a substantial amount of returning Chinook salmon, which don't seem to be as affected by other rivers around us. So it's concerning, but it is a reasonable letter, and it was well thought out. Thank you for taking the lead, Mr. Hooper.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Howard. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Item 21. Approve and adopt the 2023 Delano County Legislative Platform and direct staff to transmit copies to the county's state and federal representatives and advocates as requested by the Assistant County Administrative Officer.
Any questions, concerns with the draft?
I appreciate that you took in the feedback and that you addressed it, even if you didn't change it, Mr. Dillard's feedback. You looked into it, and I do appreciate that interactive collaboration that you did.
Any other questions or comments?
Comments only. This is a very well-rounded legislative platform for us, and it definitely creates some guidance for us when we attend our meetings, whether it's California State Association Counties or RCRC. Allows us to vote with confidence that this is the position of our board on many of these issues. So really appreciate the time and effort that's gone into it as we build our policies as a board.
Thanks, Supervisor Howard.
Yeah, and again, it's a well-thought-out document. I appreciate it. And again, it gives us the tools we need to go forward with policies that we placed in on the last board member, which allows us to write letters basically based upon this policy that we're putting out today. So, and it gives us talking points that when we do see our Assemblymen and our Senators, that we have something to really push forward when we're doing those face-to-face one-to-ones. Thank you.
And if I could, just to tie this to the Chinook issue just really briefly. So, you know, Mr. Koopman's argument was really based on his understanding of the science. And so previously, the platform did include language that had to do with endangered species act, and maybe more importantly, the critical habitat that comes along with it. So we did also change the language kind of in understanding of what he was trying to say with his, you know, needing for the science to be fully settled before, you know, supporting or opposing any specific actions. I think in this particular case, based on the data that we were able to further develop after Mr. Koopman made his presentation, it is really clearly unsettled, the genetic differences between the spring run and the fall run. So appreciate the support on this, and we'll look forward to getting that effort approved by the board.
Thank you, Randy. And yeah, Mike, I doubt you're listening in right now, but just in case you are, we appreciate your efforts in this. Okay. Public comment on...
The last agenda, it says to transmit a letter to the, and you approved it and said yes, but yet it's back again. So I'm just trying to look for clarification on how you guys run things.
Chair, can I say that it was stated in the motion, if he looks at the minutes, that it was directed to staff to bring back the letter?
That was decided at the last meeting. Thank you, Kylie. Yes. Okay. Seeing no other public comment?
There is no motion.
I will motion to approve the legislative platform.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Item number 22. Approve the attached updated GAN limit or the appropriation limit per subdivision B of Government Code Section 7903 as requested by the Auditor Controller.
He is on via Zoom if anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions for our auditor?
I think this is actually a pretty important conversational letter to come from this board, so I do believe it would be helpful if Clinton did join us and did explain it, because this was a big part of CSAC's conversation last year with the LAO's office.
Mr. Shad, would you mind chiming in for the board?
Hey, not a problem. Good morning, board. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yeah, you're a little bit quiet, but yeah, go ahead.
I'll try to speak up, fix my microphone. So what the GAN limit is, so an incumbent report shows, and based in 1979, there was a Proposition 4 which kind of froze taxing of local agencies and governments. And then that's the limit of how much you can bring, tax your local citizens, whether it's sales tax, or it's property taxes, or special assessments, different taxes. And that number is adjusted on an annual basis by a growth estimate. And what we've done for years is, this is part of our budget process, it's been pretty straightforward calculation, and we've never been close to our limit before. We've been well under our limit year in and year out. However, the state of California, the last couple of years, has exceeded their limit on what they're supposed to be bringing in via taxes. And they were faced with a conundrum on what to do with the excess, so to speak. Do they reduce taxing limits? Do they return funds? How do they handle it? And so what they've decided to do is to pass Government Code 7903, which expands what our local cities, counties, districts include in their calculation. It's a pretty big change. We've included the Project Home Key, for example, that's the easiest one to come up with off the top of my head, that was never part of our local reporting process, now is part of that process. So what I put before, what's before you today is the new calculation of the Government Code 7903. With the new figures, we actually have, I'm pulling it up in front of me here so I don't misquote everything, we've actually exceeded our limit, because the state has turned around and added new programs and new revenues to what was set via Proposition 4 in 1979. And so these new expanded programs has driven us above our limit. And so I went to the state and asked them, what does this mean? You know, why are we recording, you know, state revenues locally, and what happens to our appropriation limit by going over? And how it's been explained and how it's working is the state has pushed us back to all counties and all districts and all cities, full well knowing that it's gonna push us over, some people over their limits. The state is now taking the excess, which is part of the attachment, it's $4.7 million that were over our limit based on their new Government Code, and they're taking that 4.7, and they're putting that on their GAN limit. Now, before they passed this code, they were taking roughly, you know, $8 million, $7 million, and putting on their GAN limit from Delano County, because it was their revenue, not our revenue. By pushing it back, it's pushed us over the limit, and so they're only going to track the state level, they're only tracking the overage of the local limit, the local overage of limits. Therefore, by taking their GAN limit and reducing it significantly, so they're no longer over. It's a redirection of reporting of revenues. It's something that we are bound to report to Government Code, and I have to go before you now for your approval of this new GAN limit. Once you approve, assuming you approve the GAN limit today, I then report the overage back to the state, and they'll include that in their GAN limit. So it's just spreading out of revenues, trying to reduce the states from being over their total limit, kind of in a nutshell. Supervisor Howard said it's a pretty big topic that, you know, got pushed down the count, but that's my Reader's Digest version. It's a redirection of revenue, and they're only going to include the overages in the state level as opposed to the entire revenues. Hope you can hear me okay. If you have any questions, I'm all for Q and A, so feel free to ask.
Yeah, we can hear you just fine.
Appreciate the...
Okay.
Appreciate that, yeah. Anything we can do to help out the state, right?
Exactly.
Is there any questions or comments?
So what, if any, impacts are directly to the county level?
There aren't any.
Not at all?
You know, if we, yeah, with this new Government Code, it kind of takes away a lot of the, I guess, local impacts. And so it's just a redirection of reporting of revenues, and only the overages go to the state. It's reducing, at the end of the day, it's reducing the state's report, so they're under theirs, in my opinion. It doesn't have any impact locally, it doesn't change any of our taxing rates, measure R, measure S's, property taxes, sales taxes, nothing changes. It's just a report that has to go to the state, so they can do their GAN report off of ours.
My understanding is that their overages, there are formulas on the state level that dictate what they have to do, you have to do what their overage is. And so this basically is like a three-card Monte, or the old cup and the ball, we're just moving it around, trying to fool which hand has the money. But basically, it just alleviates the state's responsibility dropping it down, because they're shifting the money around so that hopefully the auditors can't find it, right?
Yeah. It's a redirection of revenue, absolutely. And this will, the net effect will be reducing what the state's reporting on their limit, and they want to be below their limit.
Yeah, because otherwise, the schools will get more money, right?
Well, I don't know who gets the money. It could be anybody. But like I said, locally, it's a process we must follow, and it is a, it's the state's way of reducing their overage, so they don't have to either, you know, schools should get the money, I guess, or reduce any of their taxing rates, or do refunds.
Yeah, because I think the overage, 51% was supposed to go to schools, and then they just basically have found every which way they can change the device in order for them not to report the overages the way they have to. Anyway, appreciate it.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for AB 400.
I'll second that.
That, we're on item number 22.
Oh, sorry. Jesus. Had proof. Had proof. The attached update for the GAN limit per subdivision of the Government Code 7903.
That's the one I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. Kylie, will you pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. I'm moving on to the item that's on Supervisor Howard's mind. Approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for AB 400, local agency design-build project as requested by the Assistant County Administrative Officer. Any questions or concerns from the board? No? I will entertain any public comment on this item. Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Randy, is...
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for AB 400.
Thank you. Got a motion? Do I have a second again?
I have a second.
Okay. We have a second. Kylie, will you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Now it's down to our last item. Item 24. Approve and authorize the county engineer to sign a letter of support for AB 334 sponsored by the American Council of Engineering Companies and introduced by Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, which will return control to public agencies to once again determine for themselves their own contracting decisions as requested by the county engineer.
I'd move to approve as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion. And a second, and a third. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. And with that, Kylie, I believe we've gotten everything?
Long overdue.
Yes, long overdue, that's true. At this time, we'll adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting, which is scheduled for March 14th, 2023.